Six twenty. Regular school board meeting, it is six oh one and I will call this meeting to order. I will take roll call, it looks like all of our school members are here today and Superintendent Anderson. And we will rise and say the pledge of allegiance together. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Toby, please report to the principal's office. Your door dash is here.
Thank you for asking. Excuse the interruption. Mr. Bryant will share our mission and mission this evening.
Good evening. Mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential, become respectful, responsible, productive citizens.
Thank you. Before we discuss what our meeting agenda is and if anybody has any changes, we'll go right into the first item is truth and taxation hearing, so we'll go ahead and oh, we have to approve the meeting agenda first, so you see the meeting agenda before you? Any changes or additions that need to be made?
No changes.
Motion to approve the agenda for December sixth, twenty twenty one.
Second. I heard Jennifer, so motion made by Jim, seconded by Jennifer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Now, I will turn it over to Jackie for our truth and taxation presentation.
Alright, and I am going to really hope tonight that this works and does not fail me in the middle of my presentation again. Alright, so tonight is our annual truth and taxation presentation for taxes payable for calendar year two thousand twenty-two, so this will be revenue for us for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. State law requires that we present information on our current year budget and actual revenue and expenses for the prior year. It also requires we present information on the proposed property tax levy, including the percentage increase over the prior year and the specific reasons and purposes for which it increased or decreased. So that's the statutory requirements we're going to try to meet tonight. So, in the property tax process for school districts, we have the state legislature and the governor's administration. They establish the overall property tax policy for the state and are the sole authority to create levy options for school districts. Control, they also put controls around school levy parameters, including the amount of state aid and the tax basis used for levies. So, school boards, all of you here tonight participate in the state education program for the district's children financed by levies or a combination of levies and aids. We can ask voters to approve referendums for general operations or major capital projects and can only decrease the levy from the parameter set by the legislature without an election after September thirtieth. So what we did in September is we set our preliminary levy at maximum. So whatever the state had, Department of Education had calculated on September thirtieth was forwarded then to our county auditor in October and is what went out on the property tax statements in early November. We can decrease from that amount, we cannot increase. No sound on the screen.
Play on the streaming on the YouTube.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna pause for just a moment as we've gotten information that you cannot hear us, so hang on just a minute. Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I am, I don't know why we lost the sound, but I will see if I can't figure it out.
Alright, just hold for a second.
Not sure why we lost sound, but she's gonna see if she can figure it out.
Jess, we can't, they can't hear the sound?
No. I just got a text too. But the people who are online with us can hear.
The Google Meet has sound, but the screen doesn't.
The sound of the recording is not, if you wish to revisit my microphone, you can hit the link. The recording will happen.
The recording will, the sound, so nobody can watch live. They can watch the recording live, they just can't hear the recording.
If you restart it, go back, we should restart recording and
It is recording, it's been recording.
I mean, it can do it all.
Yep.
Lisa, how long's it gonna take you to reboot that up?
I can start it up, but I'm gonna have to get ahold of somebody in IT to redo the link on the website, so it could take a while.
Like more than ten minutes?
It depends if I can get ahold of them or not.
We should have a written thing so people that can see the screen and can't hear, but they'll let know what we're doing.
Then turn the closed captioning on for the meeting for the view if you would like.
Okay.
Alright.
Good evening, is it on?
Yes, the closed caption is on now.
For those of you at home watching, we are having some technical difficulties with the sound. We are trying to rectify that. Stay tuned.
Do you want me to begin over?
Close caption, so people should be able to follow you and delay the closed caption.
Correct.
I think we need to start over because everything you went over was worded on the
Was word for word.
Can you see it out there now? You cannot see any closed captioning? I can't see it on mine either. We are not seeing any closed captioning?
On the stream.
Oh no, I'm on the stream. That's YouTube, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, usually it's pretty
Lisa, we're not seeing the closed captioning.
No, I mean, it's pretty delayed. There it is for us.
I wonder if I have to turn it on the public comment computer?
I think we all have to turn ours on. There's a save see, closed captioning on the bottom buttons.
There we go.
Yep, I turned it on on here and this is the one that goes to the stream.
Makes sense.
Well, yeah. We don't need to have it.
We don't need it.
But it's on the screen now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yay, okay. Alright, we will resume, we have closed captioning, so I apologize for no sound. We are working on it and we will continue with closed captioning so we can continue our meeting. It's super delayed.
Alright, so the slide you have in front of you is the levy budget cycle. So you can see the black bar there is the legislation happens in January through May. The tax levy decision, so the school district is the purple bars and a city and county is the red bars. We will make a levy decision in August through December. And then for us, the budget year will be from July of twenty-two to June of twenty-three. Where it's a little off on the collections, whereas a city and county, it's collected in the year it is budgeted for. Alright, this is our revenue and expenditure budget and our actuals for last school year. This was published in the paper, I believe, the last Saturday in September, November. Per statute, it shows our audited balances and also shows our adopted revenue and expenditure balances with the projected fund balances. Some graphs on the prior year revenue budget as compared to the current year revenue budget. You can see that most of our aid comes from the state of Minnesota with the next largest percentage coming in property taxes. The red is local and the blue is federal aid. For expenditures, comparing the prior year to our current year budget, most of our expenses are in salaries and benefits or in staffing costs, followed up by purchase services, general supplies, capital expenses, and then debt service and dues to student members. Our K twelve enrollment history and projections, you can see that we are currently in a declining enrollment scenario. We are expected to continue to decrease for the next number of years. Our current year budget projections, we, K twelve, we are estimating two thousand five hundred thirty-five students. For next year's current projection, so two thousand five hundred and sixty. And this is K twelve, not E twelve. Sometimes when I, when I bring things up, we're talking E twelve, this is K twelve. So it does not include those early childhood special education. Our proposed levy, looking back at last year's final payable twenty twenty-one levy for the general fund, we are decreasing three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars or four point one six percent. For community service funds, we are increasing sixty-five thousand, twenty-six dollars or eleven point six percent. And our debt service levy is decreasing a hundred and one thousand, eighty-seven dollars or six point one three percent. For a total decrease in our levy of four hundred and seven thousand, five eighty-two or three point six six. This is a graphical breakdown of our levy with the blue being the community ed, the orange being debt service and the gray the general fund. What components are making that up? Property tax comparisons on different types of housing. Now, this would be applicable if your, if your house did not change in value. It's frozen again, okay. I'm gonna stop sharing and re-share then. Re-share again. We left off on this slide, correct? Alright, so this is a graphical representation of our levy again. So the blue being the community ed levy, the orange being debt service and the gray the general levy. The next few slides here show the difference compared to last year to this year, the different taxes on property tax value. And again, these are only applicable if your taxable market value of your house did not change from one year to the next. So for example, if you had a two hundred and ten thousand dollar house here in Red Wing, last year your property tax was six hundred and eighty-two dollars. This year it will be six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So a slight decrease. Same thing on commercial and industrial, a look at pay, what taxes payable twenty-one looks like compared to taxes payable twenty-two. And then ag homestead, another graph showing that. And ag non-homestead. And so overall, our total levy is set to decrease by three point six six percent or four hundred and seven, five, four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. This was primarily due to the four point two five percent decrease in enrollment the district experienced from twenty-one, twenty, from nineteen twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two. We are not expecting enrollment to rebound to pre-COVID levels. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, so what's the current holdback percentage in Minnesota?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, okay. How much of that in our district, how does that, how am I saying, how does that impact us?
It doesn't impact us budget-wise, it impacts us cash flow-wise. So when we do the audit, we get to account for in the audit that ten percent we haven't received yet. So it makes our books look correct.
Okay.
Like we've received everything in the correct year, but cash flow-wise, it spreads it out then that ten percent over the next school year.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Ninety, ten split is historically very good. It can be seventy, thirty, maybe sixty.
Well, the one year the state, I think it was two thousand and eleven when the state was having some budget issues, it did go to sixty, forty. And in that case, we had the cash flow barrel.
What makes it fluctuate? Because I know we've talked about it before, but I just want to be clear, what makes it fluctuate?
The legislature has the ability to fluctuate that.
But it's typically because of the state budget. You know, so they're trying to balance their books and one way to do it is to change the ship. So ninety, ten is good.
Alright, how much are we getting then from last year into this year's budget?
Cash flow-wise?
Yeah.
So our budget for state aid is around nineteen million, so ten percent of that about, yeah, one point nine.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay.
Alright.
Any final thoughts, Jenny?
No, we will ask for approval of the levy at next, at the next meeting. Thank you. They do.
Does anybody else have any truth and taxation comments or questions?
When the audience wants to speak on the truth of the taxation public hearing?
Final call, truth and taxation comments or questions?
First, we gotta open the hearing after the presentation. And then we ask and then we close it.
Well, we opened it as part of the agenda.
That was discussion, the hearing is after the presentation.
We need to have a motion.
Point of order.
Thank you.
The presentation that was made, then there should be a, open the public hearing to see if there's comments, and if there isn't, then there should be a close of the public hearing.
Alright, so do I have a motion to open the hearing for the left tax and truth and taxation?
I move we open the public hearing for the truth and taxation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, now we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments regarding truth and taxation? Comments regarding truth and taxation? Last time, any comments for truth and taxation? Comments, questions?
Move to close the hearing, public hearing?
Second. Move to close by Jim, seconded by Holly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any more opposed? Alright, the truth and taxation hearing is closed at six twenty. Alright, moving forward then, our educational plan on the agenda is always there. We'll just call your attention to that. We also have recognitions and upcoming events. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I do. We have certificates of training honoring Anna Ostendorf and Pam Rowe for completing MSBA Leadership Development Program, which has been accomplished by successfully attending the leadership workshop series of phases one through four. So congratulations, Anna and Pam, and I'll hand out your certificates after the meeting.
Okay. Nice one. Glad to see you, Jenny.
Is it on virtual?
No. I must.
Here's a virtual?
Yeah. Any other up, uh, recognitions or upcoming events? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. I have two people for public comment. I will just read kind of our guidelines for public comment. We expect that comments be limited to three minutes per person and that a representative be selected to speak on behalf of a group of individuals attending the meeting for the same topic. School board members will listen to public comments but will not discuss the topic at the meeting. The superintendent and/or school board chair may provide a response outlining steps the school district has taken or will take to address the concerns. A summary of the school district's actions in response to public comment will be provided to the school board, individuals submitting public comments and/or public at a later date as appropriate. We also expect that comments remain respectful and appropriate and not identify any current or former students, their families or staff members by name. So I have two people on my list for public comment. The first one is Rachel Glover, so I'll have you come up. Glover and, no? You don't have any public comment?
Nope.
Nope. They don't, they have to sign it.
Oh, I signed it. I just
Oh, I got you.
Yep.
Okay, so I have no public comment. Okay.
Sorry.
That'll make our meeting six minutes faster. Next on our agenda is COVID-related topics. Presenter is Carson Anderson, superintendent. Also, our, it sounds like people can hear us now.
Alright, I have a few things to cover with the COVID-related topics. First of all, the latest data sheet is included for your review. We have the learning plan, the most recent learning plan that was approved, as well as policy eight oh eight face coverings. Really, the bulk of the discussion today should be related to potential mitigation strategies as well as ways to address staff fallout. And at a recent meeting, there was a request for, for me to come forward with some potential mitigation strategies and so I included some possibilities there. Since issuing the board packet, I heard some more suggestions and so I will add that, those to this list and bring it back to the next meeting. I'm assuming we'll just continue to do that until you've made any decisions to implement some or for all of them. So one thing, or I'll point out a few things. First of all, stressing the importance of mitigation strategies to community members, especially parents, is something that we're gonna do. Ann Robertson will lead that effort, she sent an email out earlier and we'll continue to look for ways to encourage that whenever possible. If you look into quarantining, one possibility, if you wanted to consider it, would be to start quarantining high school students, especially if they're not wearing masks during the school day. That's a possibility. I just included that as under consideration, it's not recommended at this time, but I wanted to throw it out there. If you were looking at a mitigation strategy, beefing that up, that would be one way to do it. Under universal face coverings, you know, there've been some comments about trying to enforce our face coverings policy more strictly. Easier said than done, I know there's one teacher who commented that, you know, my, my statement here, it says challenging to implement. He suggested, well, it's impossible to implement, you know, fully. And I think that is certainly true. But at the same time, I would like to work, or I will be working with building leaders to see what we can do to better enforce that policy. The, there were recommendations about announcing expectations at every event. So for example, at basketball games, an announcement could be made that that's our expectation is to wear masks so that the whole crowd and the visiting crowd can both hear that. One thing that we're hoping to do, or we're in the process of doing, but we didn't hire anyone until I shared this possibility with the board, is to create some temporary positions to make attendance calls and complete contact tracing. Our nursing staff is, our nursing and COVID response team staff members are overwhelmed with a number of calls that they need to make to find out why kids are not at school and also to complete the contact tracing. A lot of schools are not doing any contact tracing. They've decided not to do that. The school where my boys go is not doing contact tracing. So I'm proud of the fact that we are doing that as much as possible here in Red Wing, it's the right thing to do. But it's, there are a lot of calls when you have twenty-five cases at a given time within the school district, you know, figuring out who might be in close contact and making those calls is very time-consuming. Our thinking is to hire some temporary people to help the nurses and the COVID response team make those calls. We pulse at the positions, we're willing to pay twenty-five dollars per hour. We're looking for at least one person during the day to try to get the bulk of those calls as well as one or two at night to make some other calls. Again, it's temporary and it's very per time. Shonda would provide the training, obviously, would be available by answering clinics. We're continuing our efforts to at least make available the option for people to get vaccinated, so we will continue to offer more clinics. In terms of physical distancing, very easy, low-cost option is to make sure that the space between desks are at least three feet apart. And so we'll be doing that. We've also considered the possibility of not having any large indoor events without three foot physical distancing. That's why we only have, I think, the eleventh and twelfth graders for the Veterans Day program here in November because we're worried about spacing. And so that's under consideration to make that an expectation throughout. One thing that I know, I'm sure some of our teachers in the audience are already doing, but we want to ensure our elementary teachers are spread out during lunch, in their classes as much as possible. You know, it's not as structured and so I think kids tend to be closer together during lunch, they're not masking because they're eating lunch. And so one, one mitigation strategy, we make sure those kids are spread out. I think it's happening in more classrooms, but you know, we need to agree on that. You know, I'm not gonna read through all these, they're like three pages, I'm sure you appreciate not hearing every single one. But we, one, I will mention one that's more creative. Arlen brought this up earlier this year and it's on the list here. As far as reducing the number of students in the Red Wing High School cafeteria at given time, right now it's packed. And the initial thought is, we'll try to add a lunch period. I don't think that's gonna happen, you know, mid-year, especially with our schedule. Arlen suggested, well, what if we put, you know, a tent, a large tent outside with some tables and some heating elements? And so those kinds of things, you know, we'll at least look at to see if that could help. And then you can see some other considerations that we're not ready to recommend at this time. I don't know, do you have any questions about any of these strategies or additional suggestions?
I just want to make a comment here. Under universal face coveries, enforce policy more strictly for students. And the problems are challenging to implement and the consequences may result in students missing or school. And the building leaders will develop plans to implement policy more effectively. I am very upset that we've gone three months since we put this thing in effect for our students. I asked specifically, what are we going to do if the students refuse to wear a mask? The response was they're going to be sent home and offered distance learning. Apparently, when I read this, that's not what happened. If we're gonna have a policy, we develop it as a board, it goes to the administration, it should be implemented. If it isn't, they should come back to us. If this is the way it's being done, why did I vote to ask our students if someone wears a mask? I don't like it, I'm very disappointed right now. And if that's the way it's gonna be, I would actually entertain the concept that we go back to encouraging people to wear masks. To mandate it and then not follow through with it is just a disgrace as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
If I could just respond, I will say that a majority of students are wearing masks appropriately. And other schools of mask mandates are experiencing similar issues. I will tell you that if seventy or eighty percent of our kids are wearing it you know, throughout the day, that's a the day, that's a lot better than 0%. And, you know, I am willing and I will be working with building leaders to see what else we can do to further, you know, enforce the policy, but, you know, I think we've done a good job overall, but we can do better.
I came in today to enforce that mask policy. I, that's pretty much what I did, was put your mask up, put your mask up. So, you know, but it takes bodies to do that, and we don't have bodies, and I literally chased them down, the ones who didn't want to listen to me the first time I said it. So I can see how exhausted our teaching staff is, you know? So I agree with you, Arlen, too, but like I said, you know, me, I don't know if this is even possible, but can we have some community volunteers, like outside our building, to come in and help monitor the mask-wearing? I mean, I think it would be a great help for our staff to have other community members to come in like I did today and volunteer. I volunteered just a couple hours, but I plan to volunteer more, you know, until we can get, because, man, we're falling apart here, and we're going to need community support, you know? So I don't, like I said, I don't know if it's possible, but it sure would be nice.
Yeah, and I can certainly talk to the high school administration to see if that would help or if it would actually, you know, typically, you know, kids will put up their mask, you know, after you tell them to do so, but then too often it goes right back down. So, you know, but I can certainly ask them about whether volunteers would have a significant impact.
Because, well, they've had so long to be distanced, it's almost repetition. I know that they do that, but if we keep harping on them, they're going to get sick of us saying it, you know, and then they're just going to do it. You know, it's almost like going back to the basics. You have to abide by the rules. I'm sorry, that's just the way that things are, you know, and consequences need to be handled if they are not, right, Arlen? That's what I signed up for.
Yep, I know at the elementary level, the principals, you know, deal with kids who, you know, are often reminded by elementary teachers to put up your mask, put up your mask. It's typically not recommended to send those kids home, but at the same time, we need to keep them accountable so they wear their mask more often. And so I know the elementary principals, we're developing or have already implemented some expectations so that if there are numerous times every day that they have to be ready to put up their mask, that it goes to the next level, or they can just call in home or at least go to the principal's office or something like that. So again, that's my thinking as far as I'll be working with building leaders to further enforce the policy.
Well, and I think it might be prudent to also, if we're thinking about utilizing volunteers in our buildings, perhaps we could think about many ways that we could have volunteers assisting us right now. Sometime, you know, I'm a volunteer coordinator, that's part of my professional role, and I know how much work it is to make sure that our volunteers have background checks or, you know, whatever they're doing in our buildings, but, you know, if we could even lighten the burden to do some lunchroom supervision or even in the hallway, I mean, whatever we can do to lighten some burdens, I'd be open to brainstorming some ideas with administration about different ways that people can be utilized, because I think that there are folks out in our community who'd be willing to help. They just need to know how to ask and how to be plugged in. So I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Jennifer's in the queue next.
I was wondering about, one of the things you have listed under other is COVID pay for 10 days. I'm just wondering what the status of that is. Is it an option? How, just what's happening with that right now?
Yeah, and of course, the federal government mandated that or offered it, you know, previously, and we signed on to do it, and then we had an extension for a period of time. And, you know, by providing COVID pay, of course, it encourages staff members to stay home if they're not feeling well, which is obviously a good thing. I will say that it turned out to be difficult to monitor in terms of determining when it was appropriate use of that, a particular leave, and of course, we need more substitutes, you know, because of the people being absent more with the COVID pay. So right now, I'm not recommending that at this time, but I think we should consider to continue to look at it, especially if a bargaining group has sick leave banks. So there was an issue that came up recently where there was someone who was tending for his or her kids who were quarantined, and so there was a request that came through for sick leave bank. And right now, the way the sick leave bank verbiage is in the teacher's contract, really the answer was no, but we could certainly consider changing the language in the teacher's contract to allow it. So that's a slightly different way of looking at the COVID pay, but that's where we are right now.
Just wondering why it would lead to more subs needed if staff is already out using their own sick leave, their other sick leave, to be out for this situation or to be home with kids. I just don't believe that staff is going to abuse that if we were to have it. So I'm just wondering, you know, so it still is an option? Is it something that we could choose to do as a district?
Oh, yeah, I think almost all of these we could do. I'll give you one example. There could be a school employee, perhaps with a spouse or a partner or somebody else who could take care of the kids, you know, if they're quarantined, but if there's COVID pay, then, you know, they might choose the COVID pay instead of finding some other options. So that would be one example of, it's not abuse, you know, because people would have the choice to do it, but that could lead to more absences.
I was wondering for those, that position that was posted for the contact tracing help, where that fits in the budget?
Yep.
We could talk about that.
First, you know, the attempt will be made to include it in a variation of our ESAR fund budgets. You know, we're getting about, I think, $3 million this year for, you know, a lot of different COVID-related things. There might be some mobile room there. If not, that would come out of the general fund.
I thought most of that ESAR fund, most of those ESAR funds were kind of allocated to something already, so what, what goes off the table? Because that is on the table.
Well, you know, we have consulting services. We're Meridian for health and safety services and contact tracing, so there might be some flexibility there in terms of coding some of this time, and as a result, then we pay Meridian less for that money. I mean, there are lots of different areas like that where we could request a change, but if that doesn't work, like if it's not approved by the state, then it would come out of our general fund.
So as I recall at our last meeting, we discussed ESAR funds and $30,000 for the health and safety coordinator and another 20 that was going to be going to somebody to administer and read tests.
Yeah, or off the testing program or something like that.
Right, so, I mean, how much is that? I think it's important to look at that fund very carefully to see how much that is utilized and how much, you know, are we paying people by the test? Are we paying not just a flat rate, an hourly rate, a contracted rate? I think it's important to look at that number. That's $50,000 that, you know, I hope it's going to be well utilized, of course, but if it's not, I mean, how flexible is that $50,000? I mean, I help in some safety coordinator, I know Shonda's going to train these people, but, I mean, I think we need to be careful on that.
Yeah, I mean, we have an allotment to not only purchase the tests, you know, that we're giving, but also staff time on administering those tests as well as time for Shonda, you know, and possibly others at Meridian. And so that would be the most logical place to try to code some of this, and we have some flexibility within the pots of money that we have, but we'd always want to go through the state to make sure that it could be improved. But again, if not, maybe I'm wrong, but I do this as critically important, and we need the staff to do it, and, you know, so if it doesn't work out of the ESAR funds, then I think we need to take that out of the general fund.
Well, and if you believe that it's critical, then we find a way to do it, but as Anna said, if something's put on the table, we've got to make sure that, you know, we're not spending down money we don't have. Yeah, I think that's all that we're concerned about.
Yeah, and I get it, but, you know, our fund balance, we went from $1 million last year. We made over $2.2 million worth of tests, and so if we have a significant need related to the safety of our kids, related to mitigation strategies, then I think we ought to spend an extra $20,000, even if it doesn't come out of the general fund. It's up to you. If you don't want us into the positions, we won't do them. I'm not going to, I'm not going to push for something that the board is in support of. Don't get me wrong, but that's just a suggestion that came up.
Well, I'm not caring that we're not in support of it. I just think it's important to make sure that we have the money to do it, and I also agree with you, Kristen, that, I mean, that's what we have our fund balance for is the rainy days, and I've said that before, and this is a big rainy day. We're not through it yet, and I think that's an appropriate use of our fund, you know, our fund balance, but I think we also have to be careful.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Holly, you're next. Thank you. Okay, I have a list of questions about the things that we were going over in terms of the COVID recommendations, but I have one suggestion right now around the funding. I inquired with Jackie and Carsten this week to get an actual spreadsheet, almost out of a penny as much as we can, what money is being allocated in ESAR tree, and I got a spreadsheet, and I'm going to request on record that Carsten and Jackie share that spreadsheet with the whole board so that everybody here can take a look at where the ESAR funds are proposed to be spent, because in my opinion, there are some things on there that aren't as important as COVID contact tracing, and taking it from that fund, we wouldn't necessarily have to if the whole board got to look at the spreadsheet of the proposed funding. And so I'm going to request that that spreadsheet get shared with the whole board, not coming from me, but from Carsten and Jackie. I think it will really open people's eyes to where we're headed with some of this money and what should we pull back and really focus on what we need to focus on right now to keep kids in school today. So I'm hoping that we can address that at the next meeting, possibly if we have time, but I think that will be helpful to everybody, because it really opened my eyes to where some of the proposed money was supposed to go, so anyways, I'm going to get to my questions.
Oh, by the way, yes, she will. We can send that to board members now, and we'll include it at the next board agenda.
Awesome. Thank you, Kristen. Quick questions about what you said. The COVID calls from that position, would they be addressing attendance for kids and helping get that organized?
Yeah, right now, especially at the high school, parents are not, not all parents are calling in to explain why their kids are absent. So there was one day, a couple weeks ago, when we had 40 calls to make because, you know, we didn't know why they were absent, and we need to find out if it's COVID-related, if they've run away, or, you know, what the deal is. And so, you know, we do have, you know, each building has a mayor, and of course, we have secretaries who can make those calls, but 40 is a lot, and it's not just making 40 calls, you know, they aren't going to answer, so they have to call work, you're waiting for a callback, you know, those kinds of things. And so that's just one example, and so short answer is yes, these people would help make those calls.
Because I know we have to track it federally, how many days kids are gone, and then it goes into attendance, and it goes into possible truancy-type things, so I was wondering if that would be part of the job description, is that they would help with the attendance piece and then contact the correct people to get the attendance organized?
If needed.
If needed, yes. Is, if, or as needed. Okay. Question two. So the lunch duty, I'm confused about elementary. Are they getting paid to do lunch duty in their classrooms with their kids?
It's a part right now for the elementary teachers. It's part of their regular duty day, so they're still getting their 50-minute prep and a 30-minute duty-free lunch, but they're also supervising lunch for kids.
So, but they are getting in their separate lunch?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I will tell you that it is a full day, and it's different this year compared to, I think, two years ago, for sure last year, but I think two years, I'm looking at the audience to see if I have some nods. We've extended the elementary school day, and so not only is the day longer, last year we had two recesses, this year we have one recess, so really the time on task for elementary teachers is, you know, pretty significantly longer than it had been in the recent past. But yes, they're still getting the prep time and duty-free lunch.
Okay, great. The two-week plan after the holiday is not recommended. Could you tell me a little bit, or tell us a little bit more, Carsten, why it's not recommended?
Yeah, and, you know, I heard multiple requests. One would be to take some time off before Christmas. Some schools are doing that, and really, that's, that would be intended to give staff members some time back, you know, if you do it before Christmas. Obviously, that doesn't help with addressing a spread that might occur over Christmas because it'd be happening, you know, before Christmas. The other option would be to consider like two weeks after Christmas, because people are gathering over Christmas, and there's a strong chance that there'll be increased COVID rates after Christmas for about 10 or 14 days. You know, it would clearly be a mitigation strategy. I think most teachers would probably really consider that as, I don't know if I want to say a staff or an outbooster, but at least relief in some ways. My biggest concern is that it would significantly impact kids and parents, especially the elementary kids, because we have elementary kids learning via distance learning, they need parents home with them, and some, some parents just cannot do it. They can't take time off of work. So from my perspective, that's the biggest reason it's not recommended at this time, at least for me. I can see a possibility worse if COVID case rates are skyrocketing, and we can determine that, you know, like over Christmas break, then I think we may want to consider something like an emergency meeting or something like that. But my biggest concern is not just the staff, but it's also the kids and their parents. And actually, as an extension of that, then, you know, if parents are missing work, then that impacts our local economy as well.
Thank you. Okay, what I heard loud and clear from a lot of emails was time. Teachers want their time back, so there's some PLC meetings on the table, there's some teacher work time, but then somebody said, but they've already scheduled something in that when they were told that we're going to get the teacher work time. So how come it's not recommended that we just let teachers do their teaching and prepping as they need to and eliminating extra meetings?
Well, I think, I mean, every school should have staff meetings from time to time. I mean, we can't just walk away from all meetings, because I think those times are important to do school business. And so I think originally the plan was to have four PLC meetings a month. I think it was made to scale back to two, and I think at least one of the buildings, maybe all the elementaries, had a staff meeting during that time. I'm thinking that's probably instead of a before-school meeting, or maybe there were some additional topics that had to be discussed, so from time to time, I mean, we do need to gather, and so that would be the reason for that.
Do we gather virtually or together?
Oh, I'm going to have to defer to Jess and some of the teachers. Are those meetings virtual or are they typically in person?
They're done in person.
It depends on the meeting. There's also some that are running virtually.
So some of both, but primarily in person?
Yep.
So tomorrow I have a staff meeting, for example, in case if everything we do right now is virtual, to just continue mitigating as much as we can, so, okay, is that possible that we could look at that?
I'm putting two stars by that one.
Excellent.
And the reason is, I, yeah, two stars, very exciting. You know, I'm a big believer in that, and obviously for Oregon, it's different because we have the public nature of it, but if we can do- Uh, but if we can do meetings virtually, I think we ought to do that as much as possible. So I'll talk to the principals and, you know, there, I, I can't promise it right now, but I think it's, it'd be high on my list.
All right, two, two more big things. The consequences that, that, um, Arlen and Nikki were bringing up for staff, because there are staff reported to me and to other people that are going to events without their masks on.
To events?
To events, like outside of school, um, but part of the school day. So a basketball game, a hockey game. Um, and then there are people following that lead. That could be family members, or that could be, um, somebody who says, oh, that teacher doesn't have their mask on. Why doesn't that staff person have their mask on? Are there consequences in place for that piece?
Well, it's hard for me to answer without all the specifics.
Yeah, because I see on the bottom, it says individuals should contact employee supervisors. So, yeah, on page thirty-two, is that what you would like people to do? If somebody is at a basketball game or at a ba- a hockey game or whatever, and they see a staff member without their mask on, and they're not eating?
If there's a, if there's a concern, uh, that they want to express, uh, that it could be a violation of school policy, then, you know, the best way to, to approach that is to contact, you know, the person supervisor.
What about, um, participants that are at the events that are not school staff that refuse to wear their mask, but they know the policy?
For like at a home event?
Yeah.
Uh, well, obviously, we expect people to be wearing their masks, uh, adults and kids, unless they're actually playing, you know, they're on the court playing. Uh, we do have event supervisors, uh, at each, you know, home game. Uh, oftentimes, Paul Hartman is around. And so, uh, really, somebody with a concern could contact either supervisor or Paul, you know, the others.
Um, because I know for instance, that that does work sometimes, and then sometimes people just ignore that. Which is extremely frustrating, and we're not paying people extra to badger people about putting on their mask. I mean, it gets very tricky. I just want to know if there's some kind of statement or some kind of standard statement that staff could use to a participant at an event that says, you know what? We need you to wear your mask. This is our school policy. This is not me coming after you. This is me, just me trying to keep the, you know, kids in school kind of thing.
Yeah, one thing we want to do is announce those expectations, you know, before every event. That might help in some cases. Invariably, though, there, there will be some people who are not gonna wear them or they'll wear them inappropriately. And so I can certainly double check with Paul to make sure that his supervisors, uh, understand the expectations and know what to say.
Yeah, like it's kind of a statement, so it doesn't become a personal thing. But, you know, in the best interest of the revenue public schools, we'd look, you put your mask on to keep, you know, COVID and blah, blah, blah. Thank you. Um, and in coming up with these recommendations, how many or which teachers were consulted?
Well, I'm saying I'm being announced here.
Got it.
Uh, yeah, a lot of the, are you talking about the mitigation strategies?
Yeah, these recommendations and not recommendations. How many teachers were consulted in putting this together?
Oh, it was, uh, more random, uh, teachers, uh, who spoke to me. Uh, some emailed me, uh, some have gone through principals. Um, I also talked to principals, and so I heard some of the concerns through them. It was not a, um, I did not send a message out to all staff members to get feedback. That would be illogical and step, I'm willing to do that. Uh, but I was under the impression that I, I needed to come up with some mitigation strategies that would help us prevent, um, going into distance learning, you know, kind of the intermediate step. So that's what this is. It does not, um, represent, um, the feedback from all staff members. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. I would just, I would like to encourage you to do that. Um, and you know, just speaking from experience, when a boss comes to me and says, you have to do this, this, and this, I'll say, but that might not work, this, this, and this could work. But in my experience, just because I'm in the classroom with the kids all day, and I'm in the hallways with the kids all day, you know, I'm at lunch, so I would encourage that.
And actually, after this was posted, there were numerous teachers who, uh, numerous staff members who looked at it, teachers, they're professionals. Uh, and they not only commented on this, uh, but they also, uh, provided additional suggestions. And, uh, sometimes it's the, well, we want all kinds of suggestions, but sometimes even, uh, what are seemingly small suggestions, maybe they came back. So I'm not gonna mention the person. You know, I try to keep this as confidential as possible, but there's one teacher who suggested, you know, to make sure that we keep getting subs into our system, we should make sure that someone meets them and make sure that they are able to use technology. That that is a huge deal killer. You know, if you walk into classrooms and you're not able to use the technology or access a curriculum material. And so that's one of the things I'm gonna talk to our team about is, you know, could we have a particular person, um, who can work with high school subs to make sure they feel comfortable with the technology? We'll pay the subs extra to come in for a one-time training, if that's what it takes, in order for them to feel comfortable. We want to do whatever we can so that our subs are, are happy about being here.
And prepared also.
And, and so I have maybe another dozen suggestions that I'll include here. After I put more of these into the list, then I'll get feedback and more suggestions. But I want to share something with them, uh, so they have something to react to as well as additional suggestions they can make.
Um, my last comment is, I was just extremely impressed with our, um, staff with the suggestions that you came up with. They're creative, they're intelligent, they're passionate. Um, I can feel your wants in your messages. That you want to sustain school, but at the same time, and at the same time, we want people healthy. So it's not going on deaf ears, I don't think, from a lot of us. And so I just really want to applaud you for reaching out and staying engaged. Thank you.
And that'd be true, not just for the mitigation strategies, but also the part about staff morale.
Yes.
Yep.
All of those parts, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I think my questions are done.
You had some good ones. You hit a lot of key points that I, I wanted to know. Questions?
Mr. Bryant?
Oh, I don't think, I don't know if you have one. Good job, Holly.
Put your hat on.
Well, I have a few comments, I guess, a few things. I have to piggyback on the comments from the staff. I think the fact that we asked for this mitigation thoughts generated quite a discussion. And I hope those that's emailed us also send those to the building leaders, the principals, where they can implement it. That, that should be the first step, they go, not write to the board with them. They need to go to the principals so they can form a plan. It doesn't do any good for us to try to digest all that when we have, we have a million dollar admin team that works on a number of things, including this. And I hope that they take some of the things that were said very seriously and look at what we can do. I heard burnout, I get it. Everybody's doing less with, doing more with less. Everybody's looking for employees. But we heard from a number of people on that. And I hope that admin team can talk with something. Um, I'll get to the worst, the worst part at the end. Recommendations on that. Morale, um, I'm an old cop. Morale was never good for us, I'll tell you that right now. People, leaders, boards, and that can't fix morale. We can help it, we can do what we can, but we can't make somebody think differently than what they want to think. So I dealt with morale all the time, and I get it, but it's nothing. It's, it's a big topic that nobody's ever got their hands around to figure it out. But we'll, we'll look at it, we have to. You know, the, uh, COVID pay thing, um, talked about, Amber brought that up. Quick question about, you know me, about the finances. I want to fund everything we need to fund, but we have to also be worried that, our costs are going higher than what the revenue's coming in. You just heard of truth in taxation, our levy, maybe down four hundred thousand dollars. We have to do something. Can't keep spending if you don't have the money coming in. So be concerned, be, be aware of that. It's nothing personal against anybody, but we have to. We can't spend more than what we have, because that's called statutory debt, and take those in, it takes over, and that's up. Figures, no, we don't just keep doing what we're doing on some things. We'll be in the red, and that's not gonna be good for anybody. Um, the mask, I had a, okay. Arlen brought up the masking, and then we brought up a number of people in the emails we got enforcing it. A superintendent said seventy, eighty percent of the kids, in his estimation, I think that's who you're talking about, don't wear masks properly. Uh, I'm, I'm no math major, but I think we have a thousand people who are going in the building. That's two to three hundred kids a day. My math is right. That's a lot. I mean, harping on them all the time, they all know they have to wear a mask. And we, we need to look at what Arlen said. We need to look at the recommendation. One last thing for the teachers and staff would be worried about. I'm just throwing it out there. Um, because they all know they gotta wear masks. Loud and clear, try the doors, they don't know, but, you know, they're not wearing them. Many of them are not wearing them in any other place other than on the bus. Just throwing it out. Um, COVID pay. Um, we had that before, as the superintendent said. Um, people have sick leave. There's a teacher sick bank that's got hundreds of hours in there. And if they qualify for their, their line of sick leave, they'll be on that. Um, I know it's not what you want to hear, but I, I can't be in favor of additional COVID pay when there's sick leave available for them, for people through the contract that they have. So I thought, that's all, just one person, one of seven. Um, but I would really hope the admin team comes back with some of those things that we heard, some mitigation strategies and ideas, because this board should be, um, reviewing what the admin team comes up with. And they need to stay informed of it, be aware of it, do something in my mind sooner than later, because it is a topic, a hot topic. Thank you.
Jen, Hannah?
I'm just wondering if we could come back around to that, um, like the holiday bar of the, the two week break after Christmas? And why are the break, the holiday break? Why that is not recommended? And would it be possible, you know, maybe two weeks is too long? But if we did one week after, that would give us fifteen days after Christmas Day. I know not everybody celebrates Christmas, not everybody gathers on that day, some are later, whatever. Um, but that might give everybody some breathing space to decompress and give us more of a buffer for COVID outbreaks to hopefully, um, head them off. And I, I understand that it's difficult for parents to not be able to send their kids to school. Um, I think it's easier if we do that further, if they know that that change is coming further in advance to be able to make plans than to decide on that during the middle of, um, the break. Um, so I think if that's something that we're gonna do, that we need to decide on it sooner than later so that everybody can plan accordingly. Um, and knowing also that if your kid is exposed to COVID in school, they, they have to quarantine where you don't have the choice to send them to school then, even though school is still in session, we're not taking extra days off. You still might have to stay home with your kid for an extended period of time because of, uh, exposure, close contact, that type of thing. Where if it happens at once, like, yes, it's hard, but it's a little bit easier to plan for and would hopefully cut off some of the things, you know, down the road. I just, I don't know. Like, if it wasn't two weeks, if it was one week, is that preferable? Like, what are?
I agree. We have to do something. We're drowning out here. COVID or not COVID, not the hub is real. I'm not kidding. If anybody doesn't deal with it, it's really hard to pull them back. And we don't have enough grounded, stable people to do that. So we have to do something. And if two weeks is too long, I really, let's do one week. But COVID or not, we need to have a reset, a major mental health week.
At the very least.
At the least.
The three days before winter break, having just saying, extending winter break, taking those three days, giving our staff, our students, the time, not for distance learning, but just that extra time off. A lot of districts are doing that, and I think that alone could be huge in helping, like Nikki said, just as a reset. Um, and if we decide that now, families will know and can plan for it. I also like the week after, um, for COVID reasons. Obviously, the, the three days before would do nothing for COVID mitigation. It would help a lot with not just our staff morale, which I, I desperately want to help with that. Um, our students need it too. We have brought our students back into a school year, expecting them to be, everything to be like it was pre-pandemic. And it is not. Their lives are not, the school is not. Everything is still up in the air, but our expectations are like they were before the pandemic. And our students can't keep up with that. Our staff cannot keep up with that. We need to do something to help. And it's really hard to, to figure out what that might be so that, you know, everyone can benefit from it. Obviously, we're, we're looking at multiple issues going on here, but it, I don't think we can wait tonight without coming up with something. I don't think we can just say, we'll work on it. Tonight is the night where we need to decide something.
So I, if you don't mind, I just have a couple of reactions. One is I agree with you. I think we need to come up with a plan tonight. So we're giving families and staff plenty of time, because if we're gonna do an extra week of distance, I mean, is that a week of distance learning or is that a week off of school with nothing? I mean, what, what is the plan? Because we need to send kids home at break, knowing that January third, they're gonna have to do, you know, school. And we're gonna need to figure out how to connect with families to make sure that they're dialed in on that day. Because coming up of ten days or fourteen days already being off of school, people may not be in that mindset. So I, I'm okay with that. The other piece that I think about is our spring break is much later this year than the years past. So we've got all of January, all of February, and almost all of March, where we don't really have a whole lot of breaks. There's no N E A, there, we have a couple of long weekends in there. So is there something that we can do in that January, February, March to provide some relief for our staff? But I also am concerned, and I say that on one side, and I'm gonna talk completely on the other side and just argue against what I just said, because I agree with person. I think we don't want to put our families in, uh, much, uh, stress. I mean, it adds an additional stressor for them, right? So we're just passing stress, we're one less group over here to a different group. A lot of those younger kids especially are going to be going to construction or daycare, where they're still gonna be together, they may be masked, but they're not gonna be in a school setting, right? They're still here, but they're not at school. So I struggle a little bit with that piece too. I'm, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know what the magic answer is. I do know we need to act and do something. But I, you know, I, I see both sides of it pretty clearly. Um, you know, the, the burden to families, especially the younger families, or families with younger kids. And I also see the burdens in here very loudly, that everyone needs a break. And I think our kids need a break too. And I agree with you too. I think we have to, at some point when we can catch our breath, we all need to collectively think about why. Why did this school year, why did we come back to this school year? And this is the worst behavior we've ever seen? And if we take more time off, where kids are at home, and they're trying to learn on their own, are we creating more of a problem? Because I think we need to think about why. Why are kids coming back dysregulated? Why are kids having so much of a difficult time in our hallways, um, in our classrooms? I know they're being rude, they're talking back. I know they're not listening. They're, um, disrespectful, they're running through the lunch line and trying to grab two or three lunches when nobody's watching. I know, I'm hearing all the issues. But if we're sending kids back home where they're not But if we're sending kids back home where they are not supervised for another two weeks or another four weeks or whatever, are we creating more problems for ourselves when they come back and now we're expecting them to sit in their, their classrooms like they did in November? So I just, I really, we're smart, educated, compassionate people that I think we really need to think about the why in all of this. We weren't prepared. You were right. Your kid, I think you hit the nose right on the head there, Jennifer. I mean, we didn't prepare. And this is no hold of anybody, right? We're doing, we're all doing the best we can, but our, our teachers weren't prepared for that transition back. Our parents weren't prepared. Our students weren't prepared. Our guardians weren't prepared. None of us could predict any of this. Um, and yet I don't want to, I wanna make sure that we do everything we can to not exacerbate the problem by keeping kids at home longer when they're not supervised. But I know that we need that. So again, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, and I'm very aware of that, but I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that I think we need to, we need to be careful and think about the why and making sure that we're not exacerbating more problems by keeping kids home. But I understand that we kinda need to do that. I get it.
Holly?
Thank you. Yeah. Our heads are split. I don't think you're the only person that our heads are split and our hearts are split. Um, this morning I was in class and a student gagged in, in class, a ninth grader. Literally gagged with his mask on. And I said, oh my God, are you okay? Are you gonna throw up? He's like, no, no, I'm fine, I'm fine. That happens sometimes. Twenty minutes later, he gagged again, almost threw up all over the table. And he broke down in tears. This is the ninth grader, and he said, if I go home, my mom's gonna be so mad at me. And I said, but if you don't go home, you could get really, really sick and other people could get sick. That stress on a fourteen year old is that's unparalleled to anything that a fourteen year old has ever had to go through. He's just one of many, many kids. If his mom knew in advance that we're gonna be home for a while, I don't know if that would help. But at the same time, he was terrified, because he's been home. He's been homesick. He was terrified to have to tell her that he didn't feel good. And I know that there are kids coming to our school right now who are sick. And, you know, they're saying, my mom said I can't stay home. I don't know if that's true. Like, I really don't know if that's true, but maybe they don't wanna miss their friends. Maybe they don't want to, maybe they're afraid because families are stressed. But I think it's really critical that on behalf of the mental health around normal, everyday teenage things, kids are feeling the weight of the responsibility of the world, just like we are. Like, am I gonna get somebody sick? Am I gonna make things worse at home? And it's really unfortunate, because it's, it's so critical. They're sick. They could give it to somebody else. They could get very sick themselves if they don't take care of themselves. So what is the ultimate message we wanna send as this board to our community and to our school? We care about what? We care about you? What does that look like? And I'm not asking for a decision. I'm just saying, the ultimate question is your why? And then what is our message? I don't have the answer. My head is split just like yours. Watching him break down in tears and then me almost throwing up, because he was almost throwing up, and I was like, am I getting COVID right now? Oh my gosh, how am I even in school and am I? And so then my head goes to my mom's. Right? Then I have to bring myself down and teach another class. He has to, you know, the kids are looking at him like, did he just give me COVID? I'm like, if we calm down, I'm gonna be there with you. I mean, that's the reality.
Okay, Jen, you're on the queue?
Are you on the queue, Jen?
It's me.
Did you already?
I think you spoke already.
I do have a question though, since you have called my name.
Sure. What was yours?
Data, these data sheets. COVID data sheets. Can we get something to show us what some of this stuff means? Here's a projected two week case that the case is ten thousand. Four twenty one to twelve forty four. I'm guessing that's over. And then city COVID count, percentage of county, fifty-two, but forty percent. What's forty percent of what? What is the forty percent of fifty-two? Two sixty-four, forty-one. What, what, what are those percentages? What are they, what are they comparing to the same? It says entire population is two week period. Entire population of the city of Red Wing is seventeen, seventeen thousand, but down to forty-five thousand. I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a regulation now, but can we get something to show that this stuff, this stuff means?
Good question.
So, I mean, I wanna be, I want the most accurate information.
Holly, can I just give you a quick general response? So for example, um, on the front page of the data sheet, halfway down, it says city, city COVID count and the percentage of the county. So that would be how many people, um, you know, tested positive in the city of Red Wing and what that percentage was of central county.
Forty percent?
About thirty-eight percent that particular two week period.
Percentage of the county?
Yeah.
The percentage of the county numbers. So all the people who tested positive for COVID in the county, that percentage were from Red Wing.
Okay, well, that doesn't explain that. Percentage of entire population. Thank you. Was there any question? That's all.
Uh, just, uh, further complicated things. The, um, you know, if we did, uh, three days off before Christmas and five days off after Christmas, let's say, some of them would have to be distance learning, uh, because we have five days to get. You know, we scaled back our calendar. You know, instead of a hundred and seventy-two or a hundred and seventy-three student days this year, we have a hundred and seventy built into the contract. By state law, we have to have at least one sixty-five. We also have to have so many minutes, but we're fine with the minutes. But we still need a hundred and sixty-five days, so we just have to keep that in mind that if we, if we do five days off, you know, then, then that's it. We're stuck for the rest of the year.
Meaning if there's a snow day, it's distance learning?
Thankfully, we have new learning days, or, um, what we're calling flex days. So we do have five of those, you know, that we can use, but that's only for weather emergencies. Uh, we might be able to justify some additional time by calling them distance learning days. Um, but then you would have to do distance learning one day off.
Alan?
Yes, um. I, I assume, are we talking about employee morale and the table also in addition to what you first presented? I assume, because we've been going there. First thing, you kinda covered it there, flex days. Um, and you said they can only be weather related. I was gonna, up until that point, I was gonna say, can we ask the state to increase our flex days to more more days so that we could maybe give one day a week off as a flex day to help our employee morale? Um, as we talk about staff, uh, days off, we also need to address how are we going to treat employees such as our cooks, uh, paraprofessionals and others unpaid when you start taking those days off? Because they can't really, some of them can't afford to take that kind of pay. Yeah, maybe they could use one or two of their personal leave days or whatever. But I'm wondering if there's some way we can add flex days one day a week to get us through this year to help the, the morale of our employees somehow or other. We gotta give them some time, or maybe early releases every, one day every week. Let's get creative and find a solution for this somehow. Um, yes, we're burning our staff out. Yes, they need to do their job. I get it, but we need, they're asking for help. We're putting more and more on it. They need some help. Let's, let's try to come up with something. Um, personally, I kinda like the idea of adding a couple of days. Because we're such a dire need of burning everybody out, it almost points to, to me that we should look at starting our holiday break a little bit earlier. Then we're only just over a week and a half from when that starts. If we put it on the other end, I see the pluses of it, the, what, what's gonna happen with holiday gatherings, but I'm just coming out a little thing. I wanna go back to my question before on enforcement of the mask. I encourage everybody to go take a look. It's right in our board pack, pack of the masking policy item six tells exactly how it's supposed to be done as far as enforcement of masks, as far as employees, as far as others. Uh, people coming in the building refuse to wear, they could be charged with trespassing, blah, blah, blah. I don't need to go on anymore, but I, as a board member, have been told that I don't work for the board, or for you, I work for the board. The board made a decision to put this policy in place. The board put the policy there. The policy should be followed, and if it can't be followed, come back to the board and tell us what you need. Let's get it fixed. I'm not gonna go any further on that. As far as the COVID numbers, we keep hearing, seeing only, none of them are, can be confirmed in school. Or one or two are confirmed school cases. I would challenge, when you look at that table, how many cases can we say were not transported, transmitted in school? Let's turn that number around and get the same question the other way. Everything's positive pointing that the school's not, not where this is originating. That might be true. But let's go look at that the other way. How many cases can we confirm were not transmitted in school? So try to look at it from both ways, open eyes. That's what I'm trying to be on here. But I would hope we can come back with something. If we can't come up with something tonight, then we come back with something at our next meeting to try to help our teachers get a little more time. Teachers and staff get a little more time to do what they need to do, and, uh, it just keeps coming back to me, uh, a break in the week somewhere would go a long way. Thank you.
Can I respond real quick? First, my assumption would be that cooks and custodians would still continue to work. Uh, you know, perhaps they have staff development opportunities, uh, for the cooks. Uh, the custodians could always be declining of roads or commons area, common areas. So that would be, my recommendation is to find worthwhile work for them to do if we do decide to, uh, to do distance learning, for example. You know.
Parent educators? Yeah, what about parent educators?
Well, if they're doing distance learning, the parent educator, yeah, the paraprofessional will, will be working with students via distance learning, so.
But if we go home early, that if we don't have school on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday before the holiday break, what, what would be their compensation then?
Uh, it depends on if we did distance learning on those three days or if we just took the days off. And, uh, that would be, well, I, I would, I, you wanna treat um, people similarly. You know, um, I know teachers are stressed out. By the way, it's real. You know, it's not a
I agree with you.
You know, it's real. And it's not just here, it's all over. So, uh, but, you know, paraprofessionals feel it. Media center people feel it. Secretaries, you know, you name it, you know, people feel it. Um, you know, my, again, just to reiterate, you know, that's completely true, but it's also true for the, the parents of the kids that have to stay at home. That, that's my, that's my concern. So.
And I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to say one thing. My student was afraid to go home to tell his mom he was sick because she had been sick. And so he was afraid he was gonna get her sick again. It wasn't a work-related piece, but he was afraid he was gonna get her sick again. So I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't about work. But it's those kinds of things that kids don't worry about. Okay, sorry, Carson.
Oh, no, sorry. I'm glad you did. Um, the, um, I, I think what Ireland maybe was suggesting is something like, uh, one day per week, like on Wednesdays or maybe on a Friday or Monday, if you have a three day weekend where there was distance learning. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I, and I know what causes family difficulties, uh, if you're doing a full day off, I guess it doesn't matter too much. I, I personally might have to come up with Wednesday, because that breaks up the week. You got two days, you got a break, you got two days. Then you got three days, then you got two days, break, another. Uh, but you can only do so much with the, uh, the extra days that we got left in our calendar. Um, flex days, apparently we can't use for COVID, or can we ask the state to allow us to use flex days? You know, sometimes we need to just ask, we're having this difficulty. Can you help us? Can we make flex days? For, and look for, uh, some teacher stress days. Well, I don't know what name you wanna come up with it, but, uh, I know we gotta ask the state, I believe, for the five flex days to get it in our calendar, if I'm correct on that. Is that right? Do you have to get approval for five flex days from the state?
Uh, well, we get to meet criteria. Uh, except by the state, we met that criteria.
But sometimes things happen if you go and ask, maybe that's what other school districts need too. Somebody needs to institute that conversation. Hey, we're having problems here. We want to keep our students learning. We, uh, we wanna do this, so we want these other things. Flex days have been acknowledged to work for weather-related closures, but we feel the need that we would like to try to have one day a week. And it doesn't necessarily wanna call it distance learning, or maybe that's fine to just call it distance learning. I, I don't know how you can justify distance learning one day a week. I think distance learning was set up because you didn't feel that it was safe for the kids to be in school for a period of time, so.
Or maybe for planning purposes.
But districts are experiencing this problem all over, and maybe this is something that can help. It's gonna create problems on the other end at home. Who's gonna be home with the child in the middle of the week on Wednesday or whatever? Uh, as far as early releases go, I don't firstly, I don't think an early release every Friday would be the answer, because sometimes I think if, I would rather see, I don't wanna put wrong words out. I would rather see it in the middle of the week. I think it would be more effective. I'll just leave it at that.
Is there some way if a once a week doesn't work? Um, because I worry about that for the reasons Carson said for families, um, being able to do that once a week. And also for some students, I think, um, you know, kids are falling behind emotionally and academically, and I think if we have them home again one day a week, I just worry that that will add more um, stress to some kids, um, or that they're gonna fall behind more. I'm not, I'm not against it, but I was just wondering if those flex days would be more possible and more as a compromise, we could do it twice a month or even once a month? To give, you know, like Pam was saying, in our calendar, we have several months after winter break where there are no days off. There's a way that we could plug in those extra. We took the three days off before Christmas, and then, you know, if there were three extra days that we could put in January, February, March, um, or something, then we could say, yes, this is what we can do just to have, um, a plan in place as the bare minimum. Um, and then possibly go from there.
I have another question too, but it's not a different topic, so.
We should look at the rest of the year of the schedule and if there's PD days planned. Maybe we don't have PD days those days. Maybe we have kids there. You know, I, I mean, it could be a bigger topic. It could be a, not topic, it could be a longer spread of time that we look at in terms of recouping those days. If we don't do distance learning, we do distance learning, there are other days that we have off that that we don't have off, that kids have off, that teachers don't have off. So there's all kinds of things. The main thing is that if we continue to burn our staff.
Yeah. Right? We won't have teachers to teach. We'll have to shut down. And all of this, right?
I think what, there were six non-filled subpositions at the high school today.
Which brings me to my other question.
There you go.
Um, I was talking about the long-term subs. Um, and one of the things the teachers had mentioned over and over and over again in the email is time. And their time is being taken away. They're supposed to have their fifty minute prep time. And that is not happening because they are teaching. Yes, they are being paid to do that, but they don't often have a choice because there are no other options in the building. So what, or how are we doing on subs and hiring those full-time subs and how many do we currently have?
Um, I know that, uh, uh, positions are posted on T G B on call. And I'm gonna be talking to Ann Robertson tomorrow about sending out an email blast to our parents. Just reminding them of our sub needs and our rates. Uh, we have very competitive rates. So, um, I think we need another advertising push. Even if we just get three or four more subs who are willing to come in quite frequently, that would be really good. Even if we just get three or four more subs who are willing to come in quite frequently, that would be really good. And that would be in addition to these permanent subs on the call.
So how many permanent subs do we currently have?
Oh, you know, I was like, question, so I was going to stop the meeting, and I'm sorry, I didn't get that information.
Do we have one per building, or is that?
I just can't remember, I'm sorry, I don't know.
A push for that, I think, would be very helpful, if it's possible.
Yeah, I've always been an advocate of the permanent subs. We had made cutbacks, you know, as we came into this year, but it's something that we included in our E S R application. So huge advocate because it helps with the last-minute, you know, sub bills.
But we have to wait for that to be approved?
Oh, waiting advertising, so we're assuming it's going to be approved. Say, Jackie, do you know, do you happen to know how many permanent subs we currently are using through T O C? I know we're adding three, but how many do we currently have?
One per building, except for Hubble, so one for the three elementarys and one for the high school.
That's what we have now, but we're adding three more.
I agree with you, Jennifer, I think the more people we can have at the ready to also take on some of this burden, the better. And, you know, even if we have to hire some more people to help with some of those supervision duty times, to bring up our teachers and our parents to be with kids, and to have their prep time and more time back to just take a breather, I think that would be a good use of those funds as well. Mr. Bryant, you're in the queue.
Wow.
Do you remember what you were going to talk about?
I probably did it a couple of times, so probably got two or three times in there, so. Discussion, I think kind of breaking back a little bit, when Jennifer said that we decided to do something of those three days of Christmas week at the school. Better decide tonight. I'm worried about the staff, I'm worried about the parents, I'm worried about the kids, those three days. I don't know, I'm just throwing something out there, probably not proper, not right, but maybe if there's something they could put online that kids wanted to during those three days, do some extra credit for school. And instead of doing distance learning, there's extra credit for those that actually want to go online sometime over that break. I'm just throwing it out. I know a neighboring school gets up an hour every Wednesday, they do it for more teachers' meetings.
P L C.
P L C, yeah. Maybe that's what we look at, huh? They go out on Wednesday, an hour early. Everybody expects it, but today, everybody knows that whatever, one last hour per week. It could be shuffled, that hour, that class schedule's going to be shuffled, so it's not the same hour every Wednesday. This is instructions, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm concerned about an extra week after Christmas right now, just taking it. Without looking to see if kids now, that's another week that parents now got to find somebody for their children. But I would probably be in favor of those three days before Christmas. If somebody wants to do something, the teacher could probably put some extra credit out there, if that's not too much more than. Everybody's tired, everybody's stressed, and subs, great idea, but everybody's looking for help. Find somebody, we have a problem, what is the solution? That's how I always tell my guys, I was working super hard, okay? That's the problem, don't bring me the problem without a solution. Thank you.
Jennifer, I would make a motion to begin winter break on December 20th. Resuming on January 30th?
Yeah.
Motion on the table is made by Jennifer to begin winter break on December 20th, resuming as already stated in our calendar for January 3rd. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Anna, any discussion?
Anna, sure.
Yes, sir.
December 20th, isn't that Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're beginning it before the start of the day?
So it's the first day of break.
It would be like December 17th.
I think it should be clarified, starting it on that day, because really you want the winter break to start. I know what you're saying, but it should be clear to everybody that there will be no school on Monday, Tuesday. And I was going to double-check, was Wednesday a student attendance day?
Yes.
It was an early release.
It was an early release, so.
Two-hour early release.
So I'm just trying to clarify that, and make sure everybody's clear on it. I don't know if you need to redo the motion, I just want to be clear. My head for, the motion is basically to not have school in those three days.
We need to say that December 18th.
That's what I, it was the 20th, 20th, 22nd.
Yeah. No school December 20, 21, 22.
I just want a quick comment. I would state that those would be non-work days.
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to raise your credit. However, it goes down to equity and who can access, number one, and number two, I would prefer we did those after New Year's, the extra days, or the work days. So I'm not changing this motion, I'm just stating for the record, I would prefer that we have those days follow the break.
I'm just going to help our friend with the conversation, but I think I'll wait. I'm willing to look at it after, I think.
Friend. Jack, hands are hand raised, yes.
If they are non-work days for staff, are they non-work days for all staff, certain staff?
I'd say all staff, but I don't want to make that call.
I would say two, but.
That, if we're, yeah, that's the clarification we're going to need.
Yep.
If we're going on work.
I think that's a, that's a, that's a tough one.
Well, how does it work for the rest of winter break?
Right.
Because I would say that it should follow whatever winter break.
Well, right now, for school year staff, so people who work student contact days, those are all paid days. And they are non-paid through Christmas break.
It's not paid?
So if, so if a paraprofessional would be paid those three days, and a, and a teacher would be paid for those three days, because they're work days for them, they're student contact days. And then the days through Christmas break for them are not paid unless their contract has holiday pay for those days, for the holidays. For a custodian, they are work days, they're going to work those days. And then they'd have holiday pay, and then for the two days we don't have holiday pay over Christmas break, they would be expected to report to work. If we make them non-work days for teaching staff who have 193 contract days, where are we going to add the extra two contract days, is my question.
Great question. Yep.
Well, three contract days, sorry, to clarify.
I was just saying, no, but, I mean, I could be wrong.
And then kind of add it on to that, you know, if we reduce the number of days for teachers, let's say, to 190, then are we doing something similar for the custodians? We will need custodians here because athletic teams will want to practice.
District office staff will be reporting to work.
So, yeah, there's some details there. The alternative would be if they were work days for teachers.
Then it would be, hmm.
Then it would be easily.
Just non-student days.
Yeah, just not student days. It's different though than what you're talking about, and I don't know how teachers would feel about that. Yeah, it's going to be very complicated if we just, unless, unless we want to give teachers and parents the time off, but still pay them, but then expect custodians and cooks to work. I don't, I don't feel good about that.
Is there a way to trade, like if they have to be there, custodians have to be there that, those three days because of practices or whatever, are there other days you could, they could take off later on? Is there anything through somehow?
Like a one-time N O W?
Couple of options. What we do during critical closures is that we pay people who have to work double time, you know, then that's fair. You know, we could do something like you suggested where other days are taken off, but, you know, we're stretched in at the custodial level too. So, that's not ideal. Regardless of what we do, there are going to be lots of questions, but we'll tell you that, and that's fine, we will come up with that, but.
It's super hard for people that are trying to listen to you guys to follow closed captioning right now because that's the only thing they have to follow, so they're reading your conversation.
They can't hear it still?
No. And they will be able to hear it once we post it to the website, so they'll be able to go back and hear it, but.
At the moment.
At the moment, everybody's like, what is going on?
Thank you for mentioning that, yes.
It'll be okay.
I don't know that, I'm just wondering, the non, you know, non-student days, I think that would help staff, but it's not, it's definitely not what my motion is. Just because I feel like it needs to be a break for everyone. I wish there was a simple way to do that for everyone. Arlen?
Yeah, I, that was my question, what are we going to do as far as pay, who, what, how are they going to work on those days? And my first thought was a critical closure day, but that really isn't right because then all of a sudden we're putting out double pay to the custodians and the office staff that do report. One of the ideas is, well, we extended this winter break, or what we were, they could do a deep clean in the building, so I think the custodians should be working those days. I think the teachers, without student contact, could be working, and it still would be some type of a break. But then you still have the cooks that we need to make sure, and the paraprofessionals, and what are they going to do? Are you going to just send them home with no pay, or are you going to give them something to do? I think, I think it's very unfair to the, to people that don't get any pay if we make that move, that they get no pay. It's going to affect some people's budgets by losing that pay that they were planning on. So I just hope we get that figured out.
So we do have the option for, like, cooks to do some professional development online on snow days, correct? Could that be like an option for the hourly employees who would most feel the economic impact of not working those three days?
Yeah, and of course, it depends on contractual language that we're still negotiating for this year, so. I have an answer if this was last year, even if we have the contract, but we are proposing some changes that if we could implement, you know, in this particular case. But we would probably be able to find a way to provide staff development or, you know, other work for creative folks on those days. But there will be fairness issues, yeah, there's no doubt.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. Man, you open the door, crack, and everything comes in. Good conversation, I think it really is. I mean, I'm a big person who wants to be fair and consistent. No duplication, who we got that sees. Just throwing this out there, just throwing this out there. We heard loud and clear, I think we did, that they're putting on, people have to fill in classes that they normally aren't at because the kids are at the school, right? What if we just say no kids day, school those days, but everybody else has to report?
Staff development day.
Staff, whatever, the next three days, the next three days with no students.
And no meetings.
And you can do whatever you need to do in school during your time period, but no students.
And I'll go back to no meetings, because the minute you have to put something on your calendar, then you base everything around that.
Everybody, everybody wants to just, because we haven't seen each other in the building.
They could meet and have coffee while they're working on their lessons.
Is that, is that something, because we love, love, we're getting stressed by having to fill in spots, then a prep time. If we just do a no student day, but staff reports, kind of like a snow day or something, but not bad, you're saying people report, but no kids.
Well, and we're going to also have to talk about and think about feeding, you know, do we institute our food program for those three days that kids are going to be home, maybe without a meal? I mean, so that the, how the food service continues on and has things to do, but they can also be cleaning out and utilizing things. I don't know about supplies though either, I mean, how long does it take to get stuff in that we're going to need to have meals for?
School schedule, right, no, do the 22nd. You have less bus service, buses get all around like it did during the summertime for contract, less buses can get it out for the kids. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I personally, I mean, it's different though than what Jennifer and Anna suggested, but what you're suggesting is easier to implement because everyone has to do work.
It's fair.
I think, I'm worried about public perception already because if we just give everyone three days off and shift the burden onto families, I think that's a really tough sell, but at least that people are here working. And they'll get the stuff done, even if they're work days for teachers, they will get work. They might meet with their paraprofessionals in special education to go over things, but that's very different than a three-hour professional development activity, so.
And Community and Kids Junction are still open, so people are still coming to work in a lot of capacities. I feel like it's a community effort at the mitigation piece, and that coming to work, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, because it's very difficult to make it work otherwise, is, you know, everybody can come to work as a community.
And I don't think, I don't think we should, the board should dictate no meetings, I'll tell you that, I'm sorry.
I meant no schedule.
You got, I think that people in the building can decide that.
Yeah, no, but like, it's not okay, Sunny Side has a three-hour meeting about blah, but Current Side doesn't, and Cinderella doesn't. So I'm saying, no meetings from the big angle coming down, but if you want to meet together out there.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, those are very, two different, two different things, and I would like clarification before, you know, we leave today, so I know what to tell the principals if this is what we decide. Another thing I just realized is that Kids Junction, the numbers will be significantly higher in Kids Junction, and we will need paraprofessionals to work in that program.
Oh, so then.
So, you know, I don't know if that helps or hurts, you know, but custodians will probably end up cleaning, food service workers would be cleaning, or staff development or preparing food, but some paraprofessionals would have to work in the Kids Junction program. So in terms of fairness, there may be a lot of questions there.
So I'm willing to, I don't know if this is legal, but change the motion, amend the motion so that December 20, 21, 22 are non-student days. Do I have a second again? I need a second.
Yes, I will second still.
Yes. As student days, December 20, 21, 22. And then I would say for the direction that Carson is asking, that there is no professional development planned on those three days. So that obviously meetings will take place when they need to, but no professional development coming from a problem.
Well, and to kind of piggyback on your idea, Holly, or your comment about it's a community-wide effort. You know, we have seen tremendous support from our community when we've had non-school days from different organizations that took kids in beyond Kids Junction, and, you know, maybe we can partner with a couple of groups out there, church groups, or community groups, Y M C A, you know, we've got a couple of weeks to work on some partnerships that could support families if they need something childcare-related on those three days that we, you know, we're going to be perhaps busting at the seams with numbers here, but what other groups out there in our community, what students provide, maybe city services, I know, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas, but. what students provide, any sitting services, I know, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas, but, you know.
It's a community.
Yeah, the community at coal, you know, I.
I hate to, to throw another wrench in it.
Carson?
But if we have more kids in Kids Junction, we're gonna need more elementary classrooms and that means teachers may not be able to be in their own classrooms.
I bet you they'll be okay.
I, yeah, I bet you they'll just be like, poof, we get a break.
They don't have any responsibilities in those classrooms, so they could go in and get some stuff and leave. It's not ideal, but.
Or could they work from home that day? Those ones that were the classrooms need to be, if need to be?
Could an option be to work from home if their classroom is being used?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, from my perspective, yes, but.
I'd be up to the, I would say that's up to the leader of the building.
Okay. As long, and again, I brought that up because I don't want, you know, lots of questions swirling around afterwards. If we have that ability to allow some people to work from home because their classroom is being used, I, I think that would help.
Now, Brittany's gonna volunteer.
Yeah.
All right, so the motion on the table is non-student days, December 2021, 22.
And no professions about.
And no professional development. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Anna. Any last discussion?
Oh.
Anna, you're okay with that, it's a second, right?
Yes, um, the, the only, I just, I go back to if they work from home, some people can't work from home and that really is icky, just because their rooms being used.
I would say nobody.
Okay, Jim, I'm gonna go with you and you're the cop, and I obey.
I think this is all that, what you're concerned about is administrative things.
Yeah.
Principals and administration can work with their teachers if their, their classroom is used, figure it out. That's on you guys to figure that out.
Yep.
We're deciding today, non-student days, December 2021, 22. Any, I'm calling the, I'm calling the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Write that motion, carry seven zero.
Get the word out.
Get the word out, thank you families.
Anna, I think is on the call, so she'll.
Anna, put it out on Facebook right now.
I'll just make a comment. No matter what we decide on this issue, it wasn't gonna make everybody happy.
Right.
We did the best we could.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, and I think we had a, I really appreciate the lively conversation. I appreciate the respectful conversation and I think we're all working to make sure that everyone is supported, all voices are heard, we get it, we understand. It's, it's maybe a blip, you know, and the overall things, I know it, it doesn't solve long-term problems, but we just wanna make sure that we're doing something and doing what we can in the short term. As you heard in the last half hour, it was not an easy decision, you would think it could be, but there's so many factors to think about, so thank you for the great discussion. Yeah, before we, we're planning to move on, can I just say that, um, I think we should look into the flex days as Arlen brought us to see if there's some sort of flex day schedule we can come up with as the year progresses. This is a small thing we can do right now for our staff, but it's not gonna make the problems go away. So if we could continue to look into that to discuss next time, that would be appreciated.
Or maybe a subcategory of the calendar committee to, um, look, look at amending the calendar from January to graduation somehow.
Yeah, I think you're just kind of saying the same thing.
I like that.
I raise my hand.
Sure.
Um, I just would like to see us ask our teaching staff what would help them with this concept of a flex day or early release or whatever it might be. Get some input from our staff, what, we're trying our best to give you help, we know you need it, we know it's difficult, we know we've taken all this. Let's, what would be the most beneficial use of the time and when?
Agreed.
But let's reach out to our teaching staff along with our administration. I know we have, but I, I think we failed, I shouldn't say we failed, I think if it came to realization that we maybe should have asked more people than what we had within, so far.
Yeah, we'll say not just teachers, but all staff.
Well, I, I don't know, I just, just so we work with, with the, with those involved and get more input on what might be the best way to help, because that's what we wanna do, we wanna help, we wanna make work.
That's right.
All right, moving on. Oh, you have your number now? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you.
I can't see you.
You do? Say no. I, uh, I think we asked at the last meeting this mitigation's information, so the preliminary, it takes a while to get it proposed, but I hope the people that you asked are just going through their admin team, I'm gonna go back to that. We have all these admin players that need to be involved, we need to utilize them. And I hope the staff will, will do that, because those are the ones that can relay and help with ideas from other people because everybody has an idea, but they're all not the same ideas.
But I like that, to have the admin team, the full, full evidence, we're more involved in this.
They should be giving us a recommendation, we shouldn't be having.
It's right there. All right, anybody else before I move on to our agenda? Let me breathe. Yes, it's 7:57, we will recess until 8:03, five-minute recess.
Well, my pastor kicked me stone when I went to the bathroom, it was fabulous.
High five, Steve.
For discussion though. All right, we're gonna make the rest of our meetings.
Yes.
Get through this.
Jim, how are you?
I'm good, at school, come up and join us?
I'm not per se, one of the members of the department, and one class a person, why not?
Anyone's gonna make a motion that I can do that? I can get ready at least.
Oh, I better check my status.
I've met you guys, I've been around for a lot of years. I've been around. How are you, Mr. Anderson? How are you? I haven't seen you around. I have, on purpose. I did, I did.
I bet there's still a slot here yet.
Say Jennifer, Amanda, if you can relate to K, I'll let the elementary teachers.
I heard Jim say that it was up to the boarding, I heard.
Figure that out, that's kind of how you second.
Just a reminder, the recording is still on. Just a reminder, the recording is still on.
I just, probably just did.
Back, it is 8:03, December 6th, school board meeting, we just took a recess, we're resuming. The next item on our agenda is school board reports. Anything to report from finance?
Yes, um, everything Jackie said earlier. Thank you, Jackie, nice job.
Good job.
And also just to reiterate, um, we are trying to get in all of the forms for free and reduced. Filling out the form doesn't mean that you qualify for free and reduced, but we need everybody to fill out the forms for free and reduced, because that's money that comes to us based on all of that information. I just wanna get that message out again, and I know we were gonna work on it through, um, communications, to get that form out, um, but I didn't know that, that even if you don't qualify, you don't know if you qualify, if you still fill it out, it's part of the big picture. So please fill out the forms that they ask you to fill out, we're trying to get it onto the main webpage under forms that must be filled out every year for students. And it has to be filled out every year, so if you filled it out last year, two years ago, still gotta fill it out. And is there a technical name for that term, form?
Application for educational benefits.
Application for educational benefits, do they call it AEB?
No, I did an abbreviation.
Well, I would like to, no. Anyways, there's no abbreviation, but please fill that form out and get in touch with our finances. Jim, is there anything you wanted to add for finance?
No, it's pretty much in the manager, manager, manager.
Thank you. Okay, and like I said earlier, Jackie sent out the spreadsheet to everybody for the proposed S3 fund spending, so we can bring that back to the next meeting and discuss that further as we talk about what we need right now to keep kids in school. All right.
Thank you, yeah. Operations committee?
Uh, we just met tonight, the minutes to the next meeting and talked about it there.
Sure.
It was quite a bit.
Okay. Personnel committee, we did not meet, um, the next scheduled meeting is the 20th, I believe. Who legislated the policy, any updates there?
No updates, I think we gave an update at our December, or November 15th meeting, however, if you're interested, the minutes, draft minutes or whatever are here in the board cabinet.
All right, thank you. Negotiations, uh, we'll give you more information during our closed session today. Teachers, we continue to be working with teachers, um, and the cooks, and then we'll give you an update coming up during our closed session for others. Any other GCED?
Yes, I just got the notes, thank you, Sherry. Um, here they are. The board approved the world's best workforce report, and the fiscal year audit was approved for 2021. Two separate audits were completed, a single audit and a financial audit. General fund expenditures exceeded revenues by 223,000 in fiscal year 21. Actual expenditures were 223,000 under the final budget. The unassigned general fund balance on June 30th, 2021 is 9.3% of current general fund expenditures. We did a request for an increase to the substitute teacher pay. We didn't increase the pay, but we added a stipend onto the pay for GCED, no, for, yeah, GCED. Um, I was thinking fiber, so it's 140 day, 140 a day, we moved it to 150 a day. Oh, for the first four days, it's 140, the fifth day it's 150, and then there's a $70 crisis stipend to each day. So that increases their subpay to, to 10, to 20. So that's another thing that we did at GCD, and it actually sort of, um, competes with Red Wing, because I think, are we 215 a day?
Uh, for special ed subs, I believe it's 220.
It is 220?
I believe so, don't call me on it, but.
I might wanna say 215, only because I'm quoting them, but it could be 220. So we're comparable, it's really about the job you wanna take in special ed, if you wanna be in GCD or if you wanna be here in Red Wing, so. I think that's all I can think of right now.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other committees that want to report, Anna?
The equity team met today, um, had a good conversation. So one of the things that Jess brought up was that decision-making framework that you had shared with us, Carson, um, that that has been having a good impact and that it's being celebrated and replicated by other districts who were impressed with it, so that's a, that's a win.
Anything else? All right, so an administrative report.
Uh, there are just over two pages of items, but I think everyone's had a chance to read them, so I won't go over any of them in particular, except for one, and that is on the front page. The high school did request some calendar changes for March 8th and 15th to accommodate ACT and ACA testing. So perhaps the calendar could, committee could look at some, you know, other adjustments to calendar along with this one at the same time. That's all I have.
Comment, maybe those days would be good days to incorporate with the possibly elementary schools time.
Exactly. Save on possible.
Okay, uh, so the next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to do or want to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will ask for motion for a public consent agenda. So, Anna, motion made by Anna, do you have a second? Second, second by Holly, any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda passes, seven zero. Donations and grants.
I wasn't figuring, wow.
Find my page here.
I'm gonna just make a motion, we'll go from there while you're looking, I'll make a motion to approve, the submitted donations, which is thousands, probably over 60,000, 50 to 60,000, so.
Do you need to say the word resolution in there?
Resolution. Did I say the resolution? I, if all of them were approved, I moved the resolution for accepting donations and grants. All that.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Jennifer.
They were so grateful for the community's support. I know Big One Land did a lot of work on this. And the full list of those who donated this round is included on the website. So please review and thank those who donated.
Thank you.
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, just over, just over sixty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
We need to take a roll call vote. Ms. Ostendorf, aye. Ms. Tiff, aye. Mr. Bryan?
Aye.
Ms. Tower, aye. Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Resolution passes seven zero. All right. Student school board members. I will pass that over to Anna Ostendorf.
So hopefully you've had a chance to kind of read that background information, which was kind of a summary of my conversation with Jean Marvin, who is the chair of the Rochester School Board. So this summer, Jennifer and I met with Michelle Lize talking about kind of engagement issues. And one of the thoughts that she had, or the things that she shared with us, was talking about how the student city council or the advisory, student advisory, or yeah, youth advisory of the city council. I can't speak anymore today. How that is working and how impressed she was with the youth and the networking of that. So I had shared with Superintendent Anderson that I wanted to do something similar for student school board. And he, it reminded him of what Rochester is doing, so that's why I reached out and talked to Jean in Rochester about this. So of course Rochester is a much larger district. They have their student school board go from grade six through twelve, so that's all of their middle schools and high schools. They started, I think, with just their high schools and then kind of expanded that out. So I think the, the student school board that we kind of got started here in Red Wing has been great. And I would like to make it better and have more voices represented and involved and have it just be a richer process for those students who are involved. And better for all of us to have a wider breadth of voices represented. So any questions? I think most of the stuff isn't here, but I did talk to Jean for quite a while. So if you have other questions about what they do or yeah, go ahead.
Well done. Well thought of. Thank you. Well done. I like the idea that it's an advisory group and they can learn about it and back we, it's been since COVID, we haven't had anybody sitting down there. And I think it's a great approach. But I don't know if you have it. I think I like to allocate.
I'll make the motion. So I'm the superintendent and student school board liaison to develop a formal plan for approval by the school.
Okay.
That goes to Holly. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Holly. Any other discussion?
Aye.
Arlen.
Yeah, I, I reviewed all this and I think it's a lot of hard, good, hard work. I appreciate that. However, I I'm wondering if, I haven't heard any other ideas out there or anything else. So reluctantly, I'll probably be voting no on this, but it's, I think it's a good plan, but I haven't heard other options and other districts are doing or anything else. Tonight, I will reserve my vote to be a no.
I'm trying not to show my emotions. All I'm going to say is kudos to you in this pandemic to come up with this and to push this forward to get our kids involved. Thank you. Things aren't easy right now. So I'm just, I'm just, that just touches me that you took the extra mile to go and do this. Thank you.
Well, I do feel bad because I, I've been the student school board liaison and I haven't really engaged them that much because of the pandemic. It's really easy to use that as an excuse. But I could have done better over the last, what are we, twelve months that I've been the student school board liaison? So I'm hoping to make up for that and push it forward.
Thank you.
Make it better. Thank you.
And I, don't, don't be hard on yourself. You're in a difficult thing that was on a I'm telling you how I'm voting tonight, but I appreciate all that you're doing and I, and you did nothing wrong. You did great and great. We were struggling for the last few years with it, and it was a program that started out from scratch and, and got going and and I know Heidi Jones put in a lot of work into it and then Pam took over on it and stuff. The system we had was not working. So I, I am giving you that. Like I said, I'm just not ready to jump tonight. So. But thank you for all that you have done.
Well, and in being the past student liaison, I was trying to get to this piece because I think that the old model of having somebody, two kids, poor kids, sitting on this board, coming twice a month to sit here. I mean, it's a huge commitment. Not every kid can do that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to how do you get here? What do you do? Can I speak? Can I vote? I mean, there is a lot of education along with that, but I think it all came down to that's a, it's a time commitment that kids weren't willing to put forward. And it's a lot. It's a lot. And it's what, a two-year commitment. And so the, the old system wasn't working. So thank you for finding something new. I decided to try this and see how it works and so thank you.
Wow, I was unaware, but utilize me as you must, Anna, for community engagement. Unlike Arlen, I'm a trailblazer and I don't like to be like anybody else. So congratulations. You just sparked my interest.
She said it.
I think I didn't think I saw it. Trailblazer.
She said she's the trailblazer.
You said Mike Arlen.
I'm not like. I like to run the blond bean paths. I like to ride my own paths.
I picked that one to a throw down.
Yeah. These baskets. No. Well, I'm, I'm.
Same here with that way too.
Yeah.
But I'm tired of hearing you.
All right, so the motion on the table is to move, authorize the superintendent and student school board liaisons to develop a formal plan to approve, to be approved by the school board on December twentieth. Jennifer made that motion. Holly seconded. Any last comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone vote?
Aye.
Motion passes six one. Thank you. Now we will turn it over to Mrs. Corey, who has been patiently waiting.
I have been. Carson only gave me two minutes, so I got to use it as best as I can. Two to four. Oh, oh, I got to. Okay, okay. He told me that, but wait, I got to get a couple of things up here. All right, I will actually be professional. Sherry's probably sitting back. All right. Well, thanks, everybody. Honestly, I appreciate your time. I know that you've had a lot on your plate tonight. So I will go quickly into this. I have, so now I'm the Five Rivers Online principal. I was at Red Wing Public Schools, as you know, for a very, very long time. I have been to all of the districts around the county. This feels weird to turn my back, so I'm going to do my best, but I've been to all the county except for Lake City, and they're signed up for January. So this is our most up-to-date presentation. I also have Sherry Johnson and Jackie here to talk through some funding things. Can you see my presentation? Well, that doesn't work. I'm valuable time here, Carson. I know, I know. I know. Okay, how about now?
Here comes.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Hopefully this works. All right. There, you see it now? Okay. All done. All right, so online learning is not the next best, best thing. It's the now big thing. And I think Red Wing's board is quite in a different spot than where the other five boards were because we had such a successful run during COVID last year in our online program. And I was fortunate enough to be the admin kind of lead last year when I was at Jefferson. And this is our informational video, and it is more than a minute.
Every student learns differently, and for some, virtual classrooms have come with many positive benefits and outcomes. If you agree and you found yourself wanting a fully virtual K through twelve option for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, then we're excited to welcome you to Five Rivers Online, Good Hugh County Education District's new virtual learning provider. Five Rivers Online is the option you've been looking for, serving the districts of Cannon Falls, Good Hugh, Kenyon Wanamango, Lake City, Red Wing, and Zumbroda Mizepa. At Five Rivers Online, we know the benefits of virtual learning look different for each student. Some students thrive online, enjoying the unique combination of structure and independence. Others enjoy the virtual freedom that allows for personalized learning, self-directed work, and flexible classes available anytime, anywhere. Distractions are minimized, accessibility is maximized, and relationships are cultivated every day. Virtually, students are creating connections, exploring new ideas, and enjoying the excitement that comes with learning and discovery. Five Rivers Online exists to support our students' discovery by providing complete K through twelve online learning opportunities. With best-in-class teachers, cutting-edge technology, and are linked to the Good Hugh County Education District, we're committed to delivering classes that exceed your expectations. Your student will receive a world-class education from the comfort of home while still enjoying in-person access to the extracurricular opportunities all students enjoy. It's the best of both worlds. Curious about Five Rivers Online as an option for you and your family? Visit us today at five rivers online dot org to learn more. Explore our program options, find answers to frequently asked questions, and get enrolled today for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. We're excited to have you join us this coming year at Five Rivers Online.
That's a video that we use as that we did at the beginning. And of course, from year to year, we will change. That will be updated. All right, this is the most up-to-date enrollment. As you can see, the part-time and the full-time, and we'll get into the Red Wing piece here a little bit. Cannon Falls has had a culture of doing quite a bit of supplemental classes. And this is not exactly the same presentation when I gave it to Carson. I went, I knew I would have some updates, so it's close, but it's not exactly the same. And then you can see one hundred and ninety-three full-time students and sixty-three part-time students. Those part-time students are all seven twelve, and they can have from one to three classes at their, with us. And here you can see the overall pie of the breakdown of five R O. The nine open enrollees, that's new, are, the board voted in, I think in September, the G C D board voted in September to open enrollment to the entire state, and we have not advertised that. That is one of our goals, is to go state, a little bit stronger statewide presence next year. But we were not really ready for that this past fall. So the nine kids, they've just come, we are on the website of M V E as it is open to the school, so that helps sometimes. I will say that Red Wing has at least five students who were open enrolled to another school district who are now, because they're residents of Red Wing, that funding will now come back. They were open enrolled to one of the other districts. So, and that's true of a couple, everybody, I mean, we have the G C D tie. Some of them are going to get the, the money is going to go back to their resident district. Yeah. This is a slide that I feel is probably the most comparable. So this is as of last year's October first data from M V E and the G C D enrollment. So you can see that Red Wing is about a third of the student enrollment for all of the G C D districts broken down. So when I go back, you can see the enrollment here being one forty-three for all K twelve Red Wing, and this showing that G C D really is a mixture of kids. This is, the October first is last year's M V E enrollment. So getting back to five R O, fifty-three students in K six, and you can see by resident district, we have thirty-one from Red Wing, two from open enrolled. They are not, unfortunately, not all from the same grade. Even better, if they were all from the same class, that doesn't happen. But you can see where that breaks down. And then our seven through twelve enrollment, two hundred, oh, I'm sorry, let's go back to the K six. The K six, our, five R O is modeled after Red Wing's distance learning that we did last year, where they have a live teacher doing their instruction each day. So they have an E L A lesson, they have a math lesson, they have morning meetings, they have so that's what's nice about Red Wing's program from last year is really what five R O kind of modeled it after that. All McGraw-Hill, so we're using Wonders and My Math. So knowing that, and if you look here, the thirty-one students, some of them started with us, right? I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have my September data. But those that have come to us since the beginning of the year then just transitioned really nicely because we're at the same kind of spot, we're using the same stuff curriculum-wise. In fact, Jess and I were just talking about like we may, instead of me buying another book, they'll just take their book from Red Wing because it's a lost, you know, it's consumable and it just goes with the kid. It works out pretty well. Yep, for K six. So that's the most kids. And then seven through twelve, we use a program called Edgenuity and Red, all of G C D's been using Edgenuity, I believe, for like three years maybe, these guys might know better, for credit recovery. Now we use Edgenuity as the primary deliverer of the, not of the, of the instruction and the curriculum, but each subject, each class has open office hours and our teachers are able to meet with the kids when is necessary. So it's not a program where the kids are completely on their own. There are students that like to be on their own and they need a more interaction, but there's always that availability with another teacher. So you can see there, by resident district, we have a hundred and ten, and that would be some part-time, some most full-time. And as you can see, the grade levels, we're going to see higher numbers as the kids go. This is just a slide that I put together showing what are the options for kids, and this isn't the end. There could be P S E O in here. There could be college in the schools. That's some, that's a nice little visual to see what kids' options are for seven through twelve. K six, it would just be, you're either fully online or you're fully in school. Here's our staff of record. This has changed dramatically as we've gone through. We were, I think it's fair to say we were expecting around a hundred this very first year and to be at two fifty-six in November, December. It's a little higher than we were prepared for, so we have changed some things. So you can see our full-time staff. This is different than the, than the one I had posted the other day. The part-time, almost all are point twos or one particular class. State statute says that at forty students per hour, if you will, teaching hour, you must give another overload or another theory. When you get to, when you get to forty, yeah, you have to give another section. So a couple, unfortunately, we're right now, we're like at forty-five. We've had to overload, but we're not high enough to get that money back, you know. And then some of the elective staff work already at R B E C. So that's, they've changed, they share time between five R O and R B E C. And, and I will say that the My Support staff is what's changed things for me, having Heidi Rash there, Carrie Hanson, and Lisa Banks. It was a lot for, it was just Lynn and Brian and I for a long time, and it was getting to be a lot. Works in progress, similar to what a, what the school district works on at all times. Curriculum, things. All right, here comes the part that I always say to the boards, that the boards are usually most interested in, is how does the funding work? So Sherry or Jackie, do you want to go through it? And then I'll just. And then I'll just push the buttons or I'll push the buttons you guys are going to. Okay.
So much of this we shared, at least at my GCD board meeting, or maybe a finance committee meeting here. So the funding is going to work almost identically to how we do our alternative learning programs. So the resident, the students come to us for the programming. The money goes to their resident district. So you collect all of the money, it's in your bank account, your account. And then at the end of the year, we will bill a share of those expenses to each participating district based on the enrollment from their district. You're not going to pay for a student from another resident district, you only pay for your residents. So we actually put the example, when we did this PowerPoint back in September, you can see the example in red there. If the gen ed revenue was 6728, and at that point we had 180.8 pupil units, then the revenue would be 1.2 million. So actual today, that gen ed revenue, 6728 times our pupil units of 22450, the revenue will be 1.5. So I'm really happy with our original budgeted projections. We seem to be tracking about that way. Remember, the resident district also generates referendum revenue, local optional revenue, and other aids that are adjusted pupil units that are beyond that base pupil unit, which is what comes to us. All right, so in September, again, this is the slide we showed you, it was an example of our expenses and revenues, projections for full-time students. And we said at that point that it looked like there'd be about 2,800, almost 2,900 remaining in the resident district. So the revenue you'd get, the basic formula, 6728 minus the expenses we had earlier predicting at that point, would still leave you 28 per student. So now here's the update as of today. We did change from looking at the pupil units to going to ADMs, just because at this point with 256 to calculate all the pupil units, it just didn't seem right. It was something we would really need. So pupil units would actually cause these numbers, that 215.5 to be a little higher. Okay? ADMs is just, you're a student, you're a student, you're a student, but with the pupil units who count you as a student. All right, so on this, our expenses are estimated to be 984, and you will see then, divided by the ADMs, we have a 215.5, the cost would be 4567 for ADM. Our revenue is still 6728. That's going to leave 21, 2200. So we're pretty close on those first estimates. Kim said something really important. So there's, there's a point where your staff, your students, maxed, okay? Then you creep up a little bit. Well, now you have to hire a staff member. And until you get some additional students in, it's not going to be at that sweet spot. And so that's kind of where we're seeing ourselves right now. We'll see again how that comes out. We're going to keep battling that until we stabilize. So why are we doing this together? So we took an enrollment example of 80 and just ran an analysis to answer this question. So if we had 25 elementary students and 55 secondary students for a total of 80, the projected revenue would be 91 students, 91 pupil units times the 6728, you'd have 612,248. Now, do you see how I get from 80 students to 91 pupil units? Because remember, our high school students are worth 1.2, 7 through 12 are worth 1.2. So when you figure out, and your revenue comes in as pupil. All right. So then we've looked at our current expenditures at that point this fall and said, well, if that many students were here, this is what the cost would be, and the total expenses we estimate would be 634,000. So with the revenue of 612, the expenses of 634, you can see there'd actually be a loss of 247. So you have to be, it goes back to what I just said about, you know, getting to that exact place, then don't go over, because I guess we'll go up again. You really need a critical mass of students. And with Red Wing only being a third of the total population of our students in the county, it doesn't look like it would be a break even. It might be close to a break even, but it looks like it'd be a slight loss, even if you're on your own. Plus, there's other reasons on this next page, the non-monetary benefits. There was one application. So let's say my six members all did these applications. Guess what? They have to come to me to do the special education portion of that application for all six members. I'd be sort of like competing against myself. But for EL service, state-approved alternative programming, we do so much of it together that the state actually would come on and interview me about how we would set that up in each district. So the GCD staff actually prepared the application. We had principals sit in on that, high school counselors. We did have people sit with us in stakeholder groups to get that information. And the biggest thing is, districts aren't going to be competing. Your residents actually, that residents come back to you. And the kids are still connected to your district. By doing this, they didn't leave our county and go somewhere else to X, Y, and Z online schools. We done up in here and we kept them connected.
And they can still participate in all activities, all extracurricular activities. So we just talked about the revenue. So looking forward. Looking forward, we do plan to have enrollment kind of done in February. We can all hope that that works out well so that we can start to do some of those projections about these FCDs. I've had lots of people ask me, like, why can't we just close the school? Like, so you can be at the maximum account, but because we're a public school, you can't say you can't come? And then with member district kid, do I say you don't, you know, Red Wing doesn't get to come, but Lake City does? So that's where we really are trying to find that nice thing. One thing I changed from the first semester, I offered a lot of options for kids. Now I figure out what I have for staffing, so I'm offering more staffing, uh, classes that go with the staffing versus, because we had no idea what we were going to have. And then also with our elementary students, because they're mixed age, we are, and Jess can also speak to this. So McGraw-Hill, Wonders, you know, ELA curriculum, they don't have resources for online mixed age classrooms. So we are like almost a pilot for them because they haven't, they've only done like fourth grade or third grade, but these are mixed age that are online. So the numbers are a little smaller than you would see in a traditional setting, like 15, 16 is about right for K-2. And that's where we've had to hire a few more in our, in our three, four, five, sixth grades because we're getting to 22, 23. That's almost like what you would have in a regular setting, now you're going to miss them. So we're going to try. I, I can, I can promise you, and I think that your board knows enough about me that I tend to be fiscally really conservative. So I don't like to have to spend money where I don't have to spend money, but there are statutes and things like that. And Sheri assumed so too. That, that's my two to four-minute presentation. Jim, where am I at?
Because they're enrolled in a different school district. So the state makes the, makes the enrolling school district into the student enrollment. That's, that's in the student's equation.
This is that.
Yep.
Okay. That's the only one.
Yep.
He's been reading Five Rivers, got it, and really took the confidence of how it's good, the coolest, the smallest class that just hated, hated to be in garden and health or grade, you know, and so said. He hasn't been sick at all, and he is learning to become a leader. And for other high kids too, but you know, he helped with the big, 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 right kids, like enforcing them to pick up leadership, grow up and look for the strong ones. But wow, he loves school now, and he gets displaced, he lives in 90 years. My girl, older ones, she's active, I think she's a great, you know, she likes it. But with the current situation in the world now, we're thinking, we're going to, I love the building, but when I said, we, we, we tried to go to church, yeah, we done it, she automatically turned on. Yeah, I'm still, I'm like, oh, everything was taken care of and handled. And I'm just, I'm, congratulations to everybody who really put the work in.
We do, I will say, one thing that we learned, Brian's passion, he uses the term of customer service a lot. And we've really taken that customer service lens. So we, we've often said, as long as my people, meaning like the families are good, we'll deal with all the stuff on the backend. And there are days where the backend is really, really messy, but as long as my people, as long as, you know, knows like she's okay, then we're good to go. So I'm happy about that. We're also offering a lot of mental health classes, and I think it's strange for a, being in person to ever like, you know, when you, we would have never offered a mental health class, because it would have been like, oh, this is what we talk about at home, or this is what you talk about, kind of as being in person. Dedicating that time to that conversation has helped some kids, and the stories we're getting has allowed them to open up. And I, I know that can happen in person as well, but just having dedicated time to that is one of the requirements of the, of the.
And each of them approached us, and they were closer, and stepped out to, and even put a lot.
They have to, that was what I was going to say. They must, they have to give it a personal prep to get an enrollment in this place. So they don't lose a duty. So they're, like at the high school, if they're teaching 507, they have a duty for the fifth hour, and then if they're mine, their prep time is 5RO. So they don't, that is an honor, that part of the contract.
No.
Is that off?
Mm-hmm.
Is it on? Is it on? How about now? Well, why are they doing that? I really appreciate all the work that, that you do in, in supporting GCD and knowing how, personally, how much my life has changed in about four months since coming from Red Wing, all the schools, and leading purple, to now bleeding every color under the rainbow. So it's, it's opened my eyes. So I really appreciate, I appreciate Holly's time on the GCD board, Arlen's time before that, Carson and Carrie working well together. It's been good, really good. Well, if you could change the agenda.
Thank you. Now is it? Okay, I think this is it. This is a button that'd be on, right? Yep, I think it's good.
That's how that's coming. You can hear us now?
Yes, like clearly now the static is gone.
Wow. How about that? I won't touch anything.
All right, we'll keep talking along here. The next item on our agenda is the World's Best Workforce Report. And we'll welcome Jess Wickholm, the Director of Strategic Learning.
And you all have this in your board packet? So Carson, was there a thought that I would go through it again for the World's Best Workforce?
I don't think so, because we thoroughly covered the board.
Is it the same that you presented?
Yep.
If there's some questions, she can certainly answer them.
Did you find that link?
Yes, Jill, Jill found it somehow.
Were we able to delete it?
Actually, Ann found it, I think.
Were we able to delete off the internet?
She said she found it. If you find it again, let me know.
We should ask Jess a question, because she's been here.
No, that's okay. Keep going.
I move to approve the World's Best Workforce Report as presented. Second. All right, motion made by Anna, seconded by Jennifer. Any other discussion?
Do we need Nikki here?
Very good, very good report and a good shot. Very good, excited a lot, I'm just stalling because somebody's coming back into the room. Vote, we're voting on the approval of the Best World Workplace Resolution. Thank you, Jess, for doing that.
Motion on the table made by Anna, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the World's Best Workforce Report as presented. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Jess.
All right, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to close? It passes 7-0. Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Kim. All right, the last item before we adjourn is the closed session for negotiation strategy. So we need a motion to close.
Question, do we need to go to a different link?
Yeah. Lisa's going to send us a different link, so we'll close out of here and then we'll go on to that new link.
She just sent it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Jennifer makes the motion to close, and Jim seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're closed. I thought Carrie, 7-0, and we'll go into closed meeting, it's 8:51.